Okay. So, I'd like to open the public hearing. It would be noted that we have one public.
I have questions.
And your questions. But before we get to that, I'd just like to go over the amendment and the lawyer's comments. The lawyer suggested changing the -- let me see the line.
I thought I printed out the copy so that I may have left it in the other room. Let me go grab those.
Okay. So, that way I don't have to explain. Changing to above mentioned instead of the same. Take all three. Don't restrain yourself.
Holy mail from what I sent him to what he replied.
Okay.
Rich, do you have a copy of the -- I have a copy of the amendment.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think the change you suggested to above mentioned instead of same is a good one. So, first, let's get comments on that.
It's from the town council, so I think we should do it.
Okay. Does anybody not want to do it?
Seems good.
Okay, so we're going to change the same to above mentioned. And then he brought up the issue of lot width and why that wasn't included. I had a brief discussion with David about it, and I guess my question is, do we need to?
Essentially was my question too, when I saw it.
His idea is, or when I questioned him on it, and he was saying that because you have these three, the building footprint, lot coverage, and the gross floor area numbers specific, and lot width is mentioned specifically above also, did you want to put that in? And he just recommended a discussion. If you mean, if you don't want to include it, he's fine with that. He just wanted to make sure.
I don't know that it really adds anything.
I think that the ability to, if you are creating some smaller lots that may violate the width in table 5-1, then this gives you that ability without having to --
Gives us some latitude.
Right, it gives you more latitude.
That's what I thought.
Whereas if you limit it, then --
It's more limiting.
Well, exactly. It's just, it's going to take away flexibility.
So, yeah, remind me, the lot can't be wider?
Four times deep is, is wide.
Right.
So, it's 100 feet across, it can't be more than 400 feet deep. And then there are some specific lot widths, but because you are, including lot width is what you can define, you can change, you can set those.
Right.
Yeah, so we could, right, which would make sense in some cases, I'm sure.
Yeah. So, I would leave that.
Yeah.
Anybody have a problem with that?
I think it would help the applicant.
Yeah, it would help the applicant, it would also help the planning board. Okay, so we're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, any other board comments on -- no. Okay. Public comments.
Thank you. So, I got a bunch of questions on it. The same, you were just talking about the same and changing it.
Changing it to above.
So, this is in the new bold text using the same criteria?
Yes.
I wasn't, it wasn't totally clear to me what criteria.
The above mentioned.
You're speaking of, so this is character of the land, neighborhood adequacies, soils, and everything like that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what, I think it was a good correction on the lawyer's part because it's clearer.
Okay. All right. Also, in the first sentence, do you want to talk about building footprint, lot coverage, and gross floor area instead of just floor area, just for consistency's sake?
That's fine with me. Or do you want to just have it floor area?
I don't think we track floor areas.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, that there is no such thing in the --
So, gross.
I think that's right.
Gross, yeah.
So, gross. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Excellent. All right, so we're adding gross.
So, the next question I want to ask is, I'm not sure what the motivation for this is. I mean, I know the Pinnacle came in, asked for lot size, asked about lot size averaging, and so --
So, I can speak from my motivation was to expand the ability of an applicant to use lot size averaging, because as we went through that exercise, obviously, it wasn't practical. And the limitations are so that when we're having a massing of units, that I would, I would use the term, to my judgment, reasonably sized. I should say that I, also that I met with the chair of the zoning board after getting, basically, legal permission, because I was interested in getting some input from the planning board. And he --
The zoning board?
Yeah, from the zoning board. We have input from the planning board. And he endorsed it. He felt like the existing procedure is cumbersome and confusing, and that this is really, lot size averaging subdivision is really purview of the planning board. And he had no problem with taking out the special exceptions.
Okay. Okay. That gets to one of the other questions I had. And the selection of these dimensions. I just heard you say that they're reasonably sized.
Well, in my opinion.
Yeah, okay. There any, did you have any objective criteria for those?
Yeah, based on my perception of what's reasonable.
All right.
I mean, and you talked about it yourselves. You were here.
And we changed them.
And you changed.
We bumped it up.
Yeah, we increased the footprint.
The other thing that I'll note, the other thing that I'll note is that the maximum building footprint is 2,500 square feet, the maximum gross floor area is 3,000, so.
Were you not here at that -- yeah, you weren't here on the 27th.
I wasn't here, but, you know, I had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, so that, so that, the reason for that was, we felt that if people wanted to have, be on a single floor, if they wanted to be garages, you know, to cover garages, that there would be more of a need for that. Because we originally had it at 1,500, I think.
Yes, right, it was 15, and then 3,000.
We changed it to 2,500.
Typically, in the ordinance, the footprint is, twice the footprint is the gross floor area.
Yeah.
And that was a winning decision to limit size, and not --
I'm not sure what that question was.
It's not 5,000, you're saying it's 3,000 instead of 5. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, instead of doubling the floor.
Yeah.
It's 3 versus 5.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I mean, actually, we started with the 2 to 1 ratio, but decided that in this case, because lot size averaging is really a different ball of wax, that made more sense to do it that way.
Yeah, I think we were really thinking that if somebody, an older couple, and they wanted to be on one floor, then it made more sense to be able to build a 2,500 square foot house on one floor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Just to be clear, what's the motivation for removing the ability to have a special exception?
Well, again, I'll just speak for myself. This, the process of lot size averaging is difficult. You have to have five people plus the applicant.
Getting a special exception, getting a special exception is difficult?
No. The lot size averaging, you have to work through a lot. And you need three of the five people to, on the board, to come to a positive conclusion. From my mind, because of the way that it's structured, and there's so much flexibility and interpretation on the part of the board, that then having the applicant, after essentially a whole lot size averaging subdivision was decided, go and, go to the zoning board and have them work their way through special exceptions, where if you read the special exceptions closely, it can be pretty confusing with reference to other regulations and ordinances, having them basically have to go back and figure out what we were doing and all of that. And that's one of the things I, one of the reasons I wanted to speak to the chairman of the zoning board. And he felt very clearly that, especially because it was a subdivision, that it was better under the purview entirely of the planning board, that, as he saw it, there were, there's purview, clear purview of zoning board issue, and subdivision issues are better handled by us. And that was my point of view. It just, just having gone through the exercise, it just seemed very cumbersome and potentially counterproductive to me.
Okay. Yep. Good. That's, I have just one more thing, that as the party who went through this, this process, it's clear that the lot size averaging process is not a way to get, in any way, to get increased density, or to get, to get toward smaller homes that are less expensive.
You mean under this new one, or under the old one?
This is slightly easier, because it's more clearly defined, but I don't, I don't see, certainly, this would not make any difference for us, this is not, is not helpful for Pinnacle project, and I don't know that it's necessarily helpful for anybody in town. But, so I, I'm saying, I don't see the need for it. But, that's --
Okay, well, I do, and it came out of that, that process, and it's written, I would disagree with you, that it isn't an improvement. And if it turns out that the improvement isn't good enough, we'll improve it again, but I think this is a good step.
Okay. Good. Thanks. That's all I have on this.
Okay.
Rich, did you have something that you thought would work better? Do you want more bonus density? Is that the kind of thing? What makes this so it doesn't?
The, I think the thing that makes it difficult to use is that so much is at the discretion of the planning board, that they're, the rules are not very clearly defined as to what character of the neighborhood, I mean, we go down the character of the neighborhood, adequacy of soils, on-site water disposal, wells. All of those things give, give the planning board the ability to make a decision, but they're not objective criteria that an applicant can come and, and use.
So, the thing, I think we've talked about this before, but this isn't a regular zoning, whatever section, I think it's, what are they called, innovative?
Use codes.
Yeah. And by nature, they're permissive, where the, you know, substantially, most of the zoning ordinance is, it's this, it's hard and fast. By its nature, these type of sections are very discretionary. So, I think what you're saying is accurate, there's a lot of discretion, but it's meant to be that way.
It's depending on the circumstances, that we have the right situation, the right piece of land, and --
And the criteria, sure, I mean, you're going to get, you'll have differences of opinion, you know, on this board about how to interpret the criteria, but they're not that vague. They're, they say what they mean.
And when the planning board makes a decision, they need to be able to point back to these criteria and say, we are approving this, or we are disproving this because of X, Y, and Z, and it relates back to these, you know, we're disproving, we're saying you can't do this because you're doing it all on steep slopes, because it's, the character of the land is wrong. Or, we're approving it because this is the best use of this piece of property, it fits the character of the land. So, you know, I think that all of the criteria in a decision would need to be brought back to these criteria and say, this is why we're approving it or disproving it.
It's a similar, you know, it's different, but it's a similar process to, you know, special exceptions. If you're going to get a special exception, zoning board has to follow the criteria of section 10 and 4, whatever.
10 and 4.
And, you know, some of those things are interpretive, they're interpretive, but you can't make stuff up, you can't, you know, you can't, well, I think this is because, you know, I had a headache today, not.
Okay.
You have to, you have to justify your decision based on real criteria.
Yeah, it's not arbitrary.
Not arbitrary, it's describe, you know, it's, it is interpretive.
There are two separate boards that we currently, with the exception language in there.
Yeah.
There are two different bodies that can make that call, whereas what we're suggesting here is limiting it.
Yeah, which is what, which is why I spoke to Frank about it.
Yeah, but that's, that's the objection that I was --
We're entitled to it.
And that's, I will state that, you know, for the record, that's still my objection here, is I still think giving the applicant the opportunity to speak to two separate bodies to determine some of these subjective calls should still be in the language.
And I still think that the, if the applicant feels the planning board misinterpreted the ordinance, saying, you know, the adequacy of the soils to support on-site wastewater, if they, if they were denied because of that, and yet they have a plan by a licensed engineer that says, yes, we, we can do that, they can very easily go to the zoning board and say, no, the planning board messed this up.
Under appeal.
Under appeal.
Right.
So, it's not taking away completely any avenue of appeal.
No.
Good.
Good.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the gross, thank you for being gross. No, that was great, that was a great catch. Appreciate it.
Too many specks.
All right, so, I'd like to --
Same close as the public forum, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Go.
Yeah. I'd like to close the public forum section of this gathering, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to, well, we're going to have, we have to have another hearing.
Well, that's, I'm not sure.
I don't think it's substantive.
I don't think there's anything substantive to the change.
Were there edits that?
Yes, the two edits.
I need this back, just in the top paragraph.
I'm clarifying, it's the change.
It hasn't changed, nothing in there has changed the meaning of anything in the --
Well, considering the massive turnout we had tonight.
Change the word, though, they'll all be ditchforks and torches.
You added gross?
Rich.
Also.
My belief is that you do not need to bring this to a second.
Everybody agrees with that? Okay, then, then I'd like to make a motion to, what am I?
Send it to.
Send it to the town to vote on. With the, with the changes, the above mentioned and the gross added, that was everything, right? So, do I hear a second? Okay. All those in favor? Or all those opposed? Okay, four to one. And --
And you're opposed because you want to require that anybody who's doing lot averaging has to go to the zoning board?
No.
No, can go.
Can goes. I'm saying, I don't see the need to scratch those two sections. I love the idea of defining better for people what the planning board thinks could possibly be appropriate, rather than leaving it so open-ended. So, I do agree with that first part of this process, but I, I just have a problem with removing an option.
Well, I took your concern seriously, and that's actually why I spoke to Frank, and he didn't share those concerns. You're entitled to your opinion.
Right.
Okay, so we have two sets of minutes to approve. So, let's start with the oldest one. Anybody got any comments?
Let me just go, I forgot that.
Okay.
Go print that.
We'll still be here when you get back.
Just so I can make changes on my own copy.
Okay. Did anybody else lose power yesterday?
Yes.
You did?
Fifty times.
How, how long were you in?
Oh, it just kept going in and out, and in and out, and in and out, so.
Oh, really? It would go out and then jump back on?
And then the internet goes out, has to reset, reboot my --
So, how long, but how long was the whole envelope of time?
About five hours.
Yeah, that's, we were out for five hours.
You were out, okay. Ours just blinked for, I mean, probably lost power 20 times in that five hours.
Oh, really?
For a total of 40 seconds.
Oh, each, each time?
No, total, I mean, it was a blink.
Oh, total.
Yeah, they were working on it or something.
I mean, enough to, or a branch fell on it, you know.
Enough to set everything, all the clocks, you know, go set the clock.
Yeah, you got to go do everything all over again.
We don't, we don't have digital clocks, they're all, you know, long.
Yeah.
So, they're fine.
But the internet would go, so I had a seminar, a webinar to listen to.
Oh, my God.
I went to the Dallas, where they had the generator and consistent, but, you know.
Oh, it was a live webinar?
Yeah, live webinar, so you had to stay on the internet while you were on it, and have an hour. So, they had strong internet plus power, and I was like, okay, I'll listen here.
The, I realized I hadn't done a backup on my computer for many days, and so I said, oh, I should have. No. That's what you always think of it.
Not try to do a backup.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so the older one, anybody got, oh, you had a typo.
I just had a typo. Page two, last paragraph. John stated that he, he was concerned about whether Mr. Keith had been discussing a planning board, I think it should be case instead of cases, eight cases. Got it, okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion instead of me? Guess not.
Really?
Because I'm not doing it. So, those minutes aren't going to get approved unless somebody else makes a motion.
I have a little minutes.
Yeah.
And has, we got a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The controversy is just too much. Okay. All those opposed? All right, the more recent ones, anybody got anything on that?
I just had a minor typo again. Page one, second paragraph from the bottom. John noted that the proposed walkway from Route 10 to the patio shown on the plan is an option that may or may not be, should be a B in there.
Yep.
Okay. Otherwise, they were great.
All right, who's going to make the motion?
So, I had one edit.
Yeah, I have that. Oops, here.
I just wanted to note that we had a discussion about the exemptions that was not noted on the minutes, that we had that discussion.
What is that?
We discussed the --
That's Rusty's email to me, what he would like, so.
Something to that effect.
Something to that, yeah, that's.
I thought he was going to draft it, but, so I don't know if I put the wording exactly as I want.
I, we can.
So, you know, he can decide how you recall the conversation.
I'd just like to make sure, not make changes to any copy, and then everyone can be working off the same version.
All right, so why don't you just add, would you like Keith or Rusty? Why don't you just say Rusty raised his concerns about deleting the special exception language. Yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's accurate, right? What do you think that's not accurate?
We had a rather lengthy conversation about it, so I just wanted to make notes of the possible.
Okay, where do we put that?
It goes right at the top, I see, it said, insert it at the end of the first paragraph under item three.
First paragraph of item three? Where's item three?
If it be, just before it says, John moved to hold a public hearing.
So, that, and then Rusty raised concern about the deletion of the special exception language in, yeah, that's fine.
All right, I'm going to give this back to you, because I know you like this for your scrapbook. All right, so, who's going to move this one? You like the change. Who wants to second it?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I'm going to stay.
Oh, it was just us?
That's right.
All those opposed, okay. So, that passes. All right, so, actually, getting back to the thing that Tim referred to with a, with a copy edit, I wanted to add, is there anything new on what, in the first minutes, Tim referred to the discussion about the meeting, and then that you were considering, the meeting you have with Rich and Liz, and you were considering a zoning amendment, is there anything new with that?
Yeah, I need to, actually, this morning, this live work, there's no schedule of public hearing.
And what is, on what?
Basically, changing the, allowing planned developments along Route 10 border.
Oh, all of the Route 10 border? And were you ever going to discuss that?
The planning board, not the select board.
Both, both have the authority.
Yeah, no, but I think both do have the authority. I would point out that I don't know that the select board has ever used it, speaking of discretion, but, so you were just, you just did that without any discussion with the planning board?
We discussed it with, I mean.
No, with any, with any discussion with the planning board.
I'll say, that's okay, that's one, yes.
So, instead of zoning all the Route 10 for commercial, we're going to have to offer planned residential development?
No, and, and, basically says under residential development, on the table.
Well, this is the, the other proposal. Well, this is the, the other proposal within that, so now.
No, no, there's no, there's had, never been a proposal.
Well, there was last year or going into the LCDC, so just, just.
No, I don't know that there was ever any zoning.
I, I, you know, my.
Go on.
So, in any event, the only changes is to edit and add planning, planned developments as a possibility for an applicant. In the resident, in the residential zones, as long as the property is a budding Route ten.
The residential zones, what's that mean?
Cause we basically have the line common zone, the line, it's on table five, four, one, table.
So I guess, you know, my question is, it just strikes me as, you know, just utter disregard for the planning board.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
Yeah, I do feel that way. And not on, not, it's not only that the select board went ahead and did that, did it with no input from the planning board. None, no interest in it. I mean, that speaks volumes, and it's really disturbing. You know, I've been on, on this board for a while, for good and for bad. And there's always in town, there's always contentious issues. There has never been a time, and there has been plenty of contention, where the select board has taken this type of unilateral aggressive position. And it's a really unhealthy situation. We're a board as elected as you are. You have, as, as select board people, tremendous power. And just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should do something. And I think this is a really good example of that. So, you can do things. I think it's terrible judgment, I think it's so disrespectful of the systems that are set up in town. And that people vote for. And that's your choice.
Yeah.
The select board decided that it was appropriate to have a public forum. Public forum will dictate the public interest of this, and if there's public interest in it, it will go before the voters of the town.
So, it's, it's a hearing or a public forum? It's a hearing because you're, you're under the gun there.
So, were you just a petition?
No, it isn't the same thing. It's a hearing.
Just talk calm.
No, I'm not calm.
Then I'm done, are we done again?
I'm not done.
Well, I am, because the select board has the authority to do this.
And, and I am making a comment about my, my opinion of it.
Save it for the forum then.
I'm, I'm telling it to you, you're our select board representative, so you can take it back to the select board.
Is it a petitioned amendment?
No.
It's a select board amendment.
And you think it's appropriate to have met with a developer and decided to do that?
I didn't do that.
That's what it says in the minutes.
No, it does not say that in the minutes, you accused me of that in the minutes, and I told you it was.
That's what I read in the minutes.
No, you did not read it in the minutes.
I'll pull up the minutes again, do you have those?
The minutes say that I met with someone in town to talk about zoning issues, it doesn't say anything about this amendment.
Which, do you have the two recent, the, the one from two, two meetings ago? As to Vicky's point.
You specifically asked me if I violated the law.
Yes, I did. This isn't, this isn't the one from, from two times ago.
I don't know the.
So, the date, we can look it up.
Well, you have it, don't you? Cause you referred to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, here's, here's the excerpt from the minutes. Planning board, Keith reported Lockline Lodge came to discuss past and present issues relating to planning and zoning members. Can I, I'll just finish reading. The board, it says planning board. Keith reported Lockline Lodge came to discuss.
Taken directly from the select board.
Past and present issues relating to planning and zoning matters. The board discussed putting an article on a two thousand and nineteen warrant to extend the common district to the North Bedford Road intersection. The sense of the board members was to gather information on this topic and discuss again. Okay?
Nothing to do with the.
Nothing to do with it.
Well, I mean, it had to do with the concept of expanding the common district.
Okay, does that answer your question, Vicky?
Yeah, it does.
I'm a little disturbed, I mean, what, what did we all spend our time for with the LCDC and the?
Exactly.
And we're gonna have a forum, and this, this is just short-circuiting the, the whole process.
The whole process.
I mean, how is it not?
Kind of jumping the gun, cause you're not waiting to see what the people say.
Yep, totally. We had productive discussions about.
Given the facts that, that the consultant gave to us, some of those might be pertinent about this zoning proposal that you've come up with. Seems wrong to propose something because people can be worried about it.
I can only tell you, we have enforcement issues that are a problem, and this is one of the ways to fix that problem.
What do you mean enforcement issues are a problem?
We have non-conforming businesses along the Route ten corridor.
And a PRD allowing, is that, are they planned development, planned residential developments?
No, but if that person came in here and wanted a plan that we, it would be allowed, they would have to go through what we went through on Route ten with the Brett Ryan project. We wouldn't subject ourselves to potential lawsuits based on the planning board's determination versus the neighbor's determination of what was the original use of the property.
The planning board approved Brett Ryan's, let's get that straight. We were right on there with, with the.
I'm not saying it's a planning board's problem, the problem is the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is what allowed for that lawsuit to happen.
Okay, so, so and.
So, so anything in the zoning ordinance that might lead to a lawsuit or leads to preemptive movements in terms of zoning?
It doesn't make sense.
Makes no sense.
When your, when your minute report that you met with a development group, and then there's a zoning change that benefits them.
Does it? Specifically them, is it just for them? No, it had none.
No, it happens to.
And I also.
It fixes a problem in the zoning ordinance, so.
Well, why didn't you bring to the planning board then, to talk about it? That's the route that everybody else goes through.
So, but it only pertains to grandfather businesses, right?
No, it's changing.
No, but Rusty was saying that there's a problem, if a business is there and they wanna change.
That was a grandfather business problem.
That would just be grandfather businesses, yeah.
And then we had no base, you know, we failed in our zoning to record, at the time we adopted zoning, what were all the qualities and quantitative issues around.
So in order to fix that, you're suggesting, or you're, you're, I'm more than suggesting, you've, you've introduced a zoning amendment. That will allow planned development along all of Route ten as a solution to that narrow issue.
Which has nothing to do with.
We have, we have a, in my mind, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, we have a live issue happening right now. The same thing, the planning board danced around the issue, trying to figure out a way to get it approved.
What is the issue now?
Bailey's is far exceeding what's allowed under zoning.
You mean the one that you voted for and seconded?
Yeah, but now we have an enforcement issue because they exceeded it.
So what, now you're.
So enforcement.
Working with Mr. Bailey, right now everything is frozen, there is no way he can dig up what he had placed.
I wanted to.
And you've also given him the option that he can come back to the planning board and amend the site plan.
Kind of like Tammy did.
You know, it's, yeah, I mean, it's odd.
But we don't have the discretion under our zoning ordinance to expand it beyond what he's.
Well, well, you, you know, you, you have discretion.
Bad, huh?
Hold on, the, the.
Closing down.
The select, the select, no, you don't have to close it, the select board had, used its discretion and its own judgment to relieve Tammy of the light issue. You could do the same thing with Mr. Bailey. You know, this is a narrow issue that you're, you are saying justifies this radical revision of the zoning. It's, it just doesn't hold water.
I'm sorry.
I don't think that amending the zoning ordinance because you've got enforcement issues is the right way to go. I think that's really difficult, and why should anybody follow any rule in this town that's not gonna be enforced? You know, it's crazy. Well, you know, why don't we just get rid of all the rules? This is, you know.
Fixing the rules, I'm sorry, you don't understand.
Vicky, you know, to my thought is, what are we doing here?
I, that's my whole thought.
What are we doing here on the planning board? Why don't you, you know, we can just have the select, we can have the select board just.
This calls for, this calls for site plan review for a planned development, it gives the planning board.
And then the select board can overrule the, the site plan review?
Well, I don't think that changes anything, does it?
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't. You're just telling me we can overrule anything?
You can, so, and that's the point I'm making. Is that restraint on the part of people who hold a lot of power is a good thing. Especially where it just becomes the, the opinion of a limited number, of very limited number of people. That overrides boards that are also elected by, by the people.
In the end, this is a decision that will be made by the town and the voters of the town.
Yes, it will.
The select board is not making that decision.
The select board is not making that decision.
The decision the select board made was to put this before the voters. That's the decision that was made, not that we're doing anything, we haven't done anything.
You have done something.
No, we haven't.
Yes, you have. You have introduced a zoning amendment.
That's right.
That's what you've done.
And it can be approved or not approved by voters.
So, if this isn't approved by the voters, then what enforcement action are you going to take to remedy the situation that we have currently going on?
We have to wrestle with that with David, figure that out, are we gonna make him dig up the driveway that he's already built and everything else and cause, like, I don't really, I don't wanna do that.
Well, then, as, as the select board has the discretion to make it okay.
Well, why don't you get the town to go in and fix it then, you know, if you don't wanna make him do it, because it's not right.
What you're asking us to do is give him an individual special exception.
I'm not asking you to do anything.
When.
You, you did it, you did it for Tammy.
No, we didn't.
She did. The lights are not, so, shut off.
Alright, we've had this discussion. Anybody wanna keep it alive or move on? Let's move on. So, we got a notice about the common district committee. That's something I, I didn't know anything about until I got the, another thing that we're in the dark about. You never told us about it. I mean, I just, I'm telling you Rusty, the pattern and the message I get is such.
So, let me tell you.
Such disrespect for this board.
So, so you have no problem reading the select board minutes with regard to my meeting over a coffee?
Yeah.
But you don't read the minutes about the board creating a committee? So, the board.
But, but you, it's not, it's not the responsibility of everybody on here to read those minutes, why didn't you tell us on the board?
Well, I'm sorry, but I thought I did tell everybody.
Does anybody know about that?
I know about it, cause I think I read something in.
But I mean, did, was it ever discussed at the planning board?
It wasn't discussed here, but I, but I did hear that they were looking for people to serve on the common district.
So, so you ended up, you ended up going?
I ended up.
And could you report to the board?
We discussed various things about the common. At the first meeting, we.
Can I ask for clarification first, so does the common refer to the district, or does that refer to the physical common space, the green space?
So the committee, the board asked this committee, because we've gotten multiple requests for multiple things, parking, signs, trees, use of the common, electrical on the common, fencing around the common, safety on the common. And the board said, we need to have a committee that will come together for a year and address all these issues and come to us with a recommendation as a policy and procedure for managing the property of the common, which is actually the big common and the little common. Okay, so it's just how the town and how the select board will manage the use of that common. And so we formed a committee that will investigate all these different aspects, come up with a plan, and implement that, you know, all the costs and associated with any implementation of the plan and so forth and so on. And they have until, basically, we're hoping by the end of July to have a first draft of at least a summation of what we're gonna do. And then by before town meeting, if there's anything that is an expense that has to be put before the town's fund, we'd like to have that recommendation before we have to go to next year's town meeting.
Two, two thousand and twenty?
Yes, as far as the goal is concerned, that's what the objective of the committee is. And what we said was, we wanted a representative of the planning board, and a representative, well, obviously a representative of the select board, and the heritage, heritage commission. So, and then we placed, we put an ad out, everybody applied to that, and anybody who applied was encouraged to come, unfortunately, we set seven positions. And so we had to place those seven, and we didn't wanna exclude anyone, so we invited everyone. And we continued to invite anyone and everyone who wants to have any input on the common.
To be on.
To come to these meetings, come to these meetings, they don't necessarily have a vote, because it's an official vote by the people who are placed by the select board. But everybody's encouraged to participate, and, and we, to, in report, I think, at our first meeting, we're having a meeting next Monday.
Next Monday, yeah. Yeah, so at the first meeting, we chose a chairman and secretary, and actually two co-chair.
Two co-chairmen. Lead, lead chairman, co-chairman, and a co-chairman.
And a secretary, yeah. And we, at the first meeting, we just brought up a lot of issues of the common, things that, as Rusty said, people talked about, one was parking, one was, well, actually, one thing that brought up was possibly exploring burying the power lines, which, I mean, that's been brought up in the past, but personally, I think that would be one of the best things the town could ever do. Cause it was said that, that we'll never have really good trees on the common, of course, power lines there. So, so anyway, that was, that was one thing that was brought, I don't know what else there is to be told.
Well, look at the, there'll be minutes, it's a public meeting, and so the minutes that we published.
I think it's, I think the, the committee's a good idea.
And so, now, this, it was such an introduction, election, you know, appointment of officers, and then a broad rush list of everything, which nobody could keep in their head, so we, it's gonna be distributed for Monday, and then we'll hopefully divvy up the, the tasks amongst the committee on Monday.
So, are, are you going to stay on that, or?
I mean, I can't, unless somebody else wants to do it.
Are you interested, you live right there.
Yeah, I know, whenever meetings.
Well, at Monday, usually.
What, at the night or?
They're not set yet.
Oh, they're not?
Well, we're gonna set them on Monday, so.
Yeah.
So, what, what time is?
Chairman is putting a menu of, of meeting dates together for us to all talk about on Monday.
I think that, there's a meeting next Monday at seven o'clock, and then there's.
Are you interested in that?
February fourth is the next one, I think.
Anyone and everyone's welcome.
No, but I mean, as, as a, as a planning.
As a voting rep.
Do you want me to trade off of you, just I have so many night meetings.
Oh, I know, well, yeah, let's do, I'll go, and then I, I mean, you can go, go.
We can go wherever you want, or I can go next Monday, right? No, uh, I don't know if I can.
Well, we can work it out.
So why don't, why don't we leave it that, that you are both.
Only one of us.
Alternates.
One's a, one's an alternate and.
Exactly.
But only one of us can vote, so if we're both there, then we're both.
Right.
That's fine.
Whoever's there that night, not sitting in the chair, so they all can vote.
Whoever votes louder.
Yeah, and of course, I'm on the heritage commission also, and we, we've already discussed this on the heritage commission, so.
Right.
The other thing we talked about was signs. There's, the state has put up so many signs, I don't know if people even noticed, but there's, we feel there's a lot of extraneous signs, so it would be nice to try to get rid of.
The signs?
Oh, this is the one today.
Which one?
It's very confusing, it's almost right across, between Dallas and the store, there's a sign that has this huge arrow that shows that Route ten goes this way. And underneath it says Dorchester Road, so if somebody's looking for Dorchester Road. And underneath it says Dorchester Road, so if somebody's looking for Dorchester Road, if you look at me, I'd say take that, you know, take that turn and go this way. It's very confusing, so that one doesn't make any sense.
So that's, this sounds good.
Yeah.
It is, and it was a very good positive meeting.
It was a, I think a recommendation from those forums at the Lime Foundation held. That was one of the things.
Great, so.
There, that's our Dave Salone, that's going on a lot of his art in the common and skating rink and all that, so.
So good, so at least one of you will be at the meeting.
I can go this coming Monday if you want to not go. There's some Mondays I'm not going to be able to go, so.
All right, well, why don't, do they even vote?
Well, that's fine.
Well, you can both, you can both go, but only one, only one of you should.
Tim can vote.
Have a voice.
Yeah, but you should, but because you live somewhere.
I wish you could live nearby.
All right. So the, are we done with that? The Lime Common zoning build out. We were going to discuss that. I really, I mean, I read the stuff. It wasn't much clearer than I was before.
Was there any papers sent around?
Yes.
For that?
I did send out a new one, yes.
Okay. I don't have, I didn't.
Yes, I did.
The one thing they didn't change, and I just don't understand, they used parameters like four stories and spaces both like six hundred and seventy-five square feet. Who in line is going to want to move into a unit at six hundred and seventy-five square feet? I mean, is that really what we were looking to find if we could? So this huge number of units that are possible that they kind of.
Well.
I have to say, I don't understand that, I mean.
I, I think what they, I'm guessing that that was the minimum size that, you know, I don't know.
I don't know where they get.
I don't know where they got. It's certainly conceivable that, I mean, I lived in a five hundred foot apartment for years, so, you know, it's certainly conceivable.
We don't have one, I don't think we have any, the smallest place I think we have.
But they could be built.
I think that's the kind of thing that people are looking to be built.
It's like twenty by thirty, right? Is that right?
Yeah, it's looking for twenty by thirty.
Twenty by thirty.
Twenty by thirty, that's pretty big.
I lived in a five hundred square foot apartment with a bed up here, an office underneath the bed.
I just throw it out, like, I just don't know if it's relevant to the town.
It may not be.
If you think it is.
Senior, it might be for senior houses.
No, it's for single, single parents with a child in someplace small that they can afford to live in. And I, the front part of my house, which is basically where I live, is forty by thirty-five. So you have a full-size kitchen, a bathroom, and a tub, and a full bath, and bedroom.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's, it's small, but I don't think it's.
Well, it has to have a mudroom.
It's prohibitive.
If they expand that size to say that that's the relative size of all units, use that multiplier.
No, no, that I wouldn't say.
Yeah, that's what they did. I mean, they used that multiplier all throughout the district.
All throughout?
Yeah, and they came up with.
I think that, I think that's unreal, that's unrealistic.
Right. So I was trying to understand where we were going with the data we're gathering.
Well, okay, but I guess, I guess what we were asking for was maximum build out. So I, you know, that would be if every, but it's, yeah. I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to take this information and, and then say, you know, what is the, or maybe we can take an average small size, not the bare minimum realistic size.
The other thing, the other thing they did, which I don't know if anybody did the mapping of it, but when I looked at the lots that they used as, one of the bigger ones is the cemetery. Like, we're not going to tear off the cemetery.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't notice.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's like the cemetery, the pit, I mean, the pit is obviously the biggest one.
The pit could be developed.
Yeah, that's the biggest one, it has forty, forty-one units or something on the pit. Just in that, when we got the spreadsheet and you could analyze the spreadsheet.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't know whether it's a question of whether, you know, we need to question them further, but we need to, we need to interpret this in a way where it's meaningful.
Right, and of course, the big unknown is the septic, I mean, we're obviously.
Well, that we're.
We're never going to know.
We're never going to know.
But I mean, we're not, I don't think we could ever put in the maximum number with the septic system.
No, and then even, you know, to assume that people will, I mean, yes, the reality exists that people will tear down a house and build something else. I mean, it is amazing, it's happening, it's happening.
It's happening all the way.
Yeah, it blows you away, it does. But that's not really what we want to encourage in the downtown district, you know?
No, no.
So it's like, oh, this is the common, the Lime Common District we're talking about here. What, you know, I don't know that we, that's where I'm wondering how much we want to promote.
You mean the findings?
Yeah.
I, I don't think at this point, there, I guess that's why I'm bringing it up, is I think we need to do some interpreting of our own to make them meaningful, because they're not meaningful at this point. And I, and I still wasn't clear on where, where she was talking about units versus inhabitants or whatever, you know, residents.
Is she coming here?
Well, that's something, you know.
It seems like we can solve a lot of this in half an hour if she was here, we could just ask.
We absolutely ask her, I just need a, a meeting that you want her to attend, I can ask. Do we have questions?
The budget is already going through.
I mean.
But I think.
The questions we're talking about are not, don't sound like questions that she's going to be able to.
Well, again, that's why I wanted questions upfront to send to her to give her time to respond. It's very hard at a meeting to, if you don't know ahead of time what you're going to be asked to be able to respond.
You know, maybe what we should all, you know, each member should do is take a look at the, at the report and you know, try to make sense of it and try to come up with criteria that would be meaningful as opposed to like what Rusty was talking about.
I think that the, you know, we don't have to throw the report away because she used that factor. And what we could say is, okay, there's going to be twenty-five percent will be built that size and, and then, you know, maybe fifty percent will be twice that size and twenty-five more will be three times that size or something like that.
And we have all her data.
On that spreadsheet.
Right, on the spreadsheet, so.
And the mapping stuff, so we can make changes and see the result of those changes.
So if you do, this is another example, I mean, I sat down with this thing to try to understand that spreadsheet and looked at the maps and lots and the certain ones that popped up were where, hey, we have great potential here for forty-one units or thirty-two units or. I was like, really, where's that? And I looked at the, I came up with this, like, what? So then, you know, the other thing it does is it says we can go to four stories. Well, we can't go to four stories anywhere, it's only allowed.
So that's, that's just wrong.
It's a safety issue, it's not the zoning.
And when you divide, if you take the.
That's a fire, a fire issue.
Yeah, if you take that and then say, in this particular square footage, you can get this many six hundred square foot units, that doesn't leave open space for stairways and, you know, and so, and that's all got to be included in there. So this is, it's a very complicated thing to do.
It is.
And I don't know how.
I think what we, what we can get a sense of is basically what, not, not the wrong assumptions where, you know, you're going to cram everything in here and, and it's in the cemetery. But, 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 and I mean this positively, not negatively, the hotspots, like, okay, so this, we can rule, we can cross out the cemetery. I mean, that's probably, we should have a working meeting where we go through it all together and say, let's cross out the cemetery. This, you know, not so much. This, this looks like maybe.
The other, the other big one I think was the Lime historians building, you know, that, that house, that's one of the bigger lots. So you could subdivide that off and, well, that ain't happening in this town, they just bought that and that's.
Right, well, that's our local knowledge that we can use to.
Right, yeah, she doesn't, she doesn't have that information.
But she must have known, she should know about the cemetery.
Well, if, you know, again, I'd have to look at what some, I think that it is on the tax card, so that it does say it's a cemetery, so I think.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't hold that against her.
And that's something we can.
For our purposes, we know, we know what we know and we can, we can work with this.
Right.
And, and get at least some sense of where there's actual real potential. And then there's going to be murky areas, and they'll be murky.
Right.
So let's add to our to-do list to have a working session where everybody works on.
Yeah, let's try to like provide local proofing of the spreadsheet. And then, I mean, there's no reason not to, once we feel comfortable with the data, to share.
Oh, we should share, absolutely.
It's a nice study, and mapping is really good.
You know, the, the, everybody, from the minute I got on here, everybody was always talking through like completely different board personalities and everything. Oh, the, the common, the common, the common, we can do this, we can do that. Well, I was always, well, we don't, we have no idea what we can do there. So this is at least a step towards better knowing. All right, and then the lighting. Are people ready to discuss lighting?
This seems like a lot, but it's really, like, the first two and a half pages are definitions. And so if you go to page three, general exterior lighting requirements, that's really where the guidance is.
Starting where?
Starting on page three.
So these are all definitions?
Those are all definitions, so it's really not that bad in terms of regulation. It starts down there.
Okay, so can I, I have a question on, so are the, these are from Hanover?
No, Hanover, no, they're not from Hanover.
Okay, so on page, I want to go page three.
Hanover's got that.
Huh?
Hanover really doesn't have good lighting.
Okay. So after, add picture for shielding. I didn't understand this, that first one, A, all lighting including emergency lighting in the town of Lime is required to be fully shielded. I just, it confuses me, I'm, I'm not good at lighting.
If you have a beam of light that's coming down, you know, down ninety degrees from that beam of light, it's here.
All right.
So you want it, you want it to be shielded and limit the intensity below the ninety, to below the ninety-degree mark. You don't want it to go up like this at a hundred and twenty, you want it to be like this. And that's why I can bring in a picture to show how they should be shielded.
Okay.
Show that.
And do we need something like for F, the operation of searchlights is prohibited except for emergency purposes? Because if there's some sort of an emergency where they're using it. I'm sorry, but you.
No, the searchlights are those things that go like this that are generally like they're bought of, you know, certainly car dealers. And you might see them.
Oh, so it's a distinction between.
In Hollywood, you know, when they, you know, are going like this because all the stars are in.
Come on, line.
Hooray, hooray for Hollywood.
Ninety-three.
So, yeah, these are, you know.
All right, so that's, so that's not necessary.
This is half exterior lighting that wouldn't be like a person's headlamp or a flashlight.
So these aren't really searchlights?
No, they're called searchlights, but they're.
That's what they're called, yeah.
They're not.
So, so I don't know how, I mean, if you could think of a more way, better way to describe that.
Yeah, they used them in London during the Second World War to try to see the planes.
Right.
Yeah.
So except for emergency purposes like attack by air.
Yeah, exactly, but so if you can find a more descriptive term, that, that's a, a common and we used one in the lighting world. And I don't know if, you know those like guys that are like filled with air that go like this?
Yep.
Would you consider that a sign? Because that kind of came up recently in the conversation.
I would, boy, that's, I would say no.
Okay.
Under our zoning, because I don't think a sign, you know, it's not giving you direction. It's basically trying to get your attention. That's, there's no sign of this.
I think that this was, well, it's, it's a discretionary thing.
Right, it's, I wouldn't consider it one, nor would I consider it a structure, so I would say it's not covered under the zoning because it's, a sign to me tell, is giving you instructions, is giving you information. One of those things, all it's doing is catching your eye and making you look at something.
Okay, well, I don't know, that was just a random thing that came up about how that would be dealt with, because sometimes those are internally lit and they do, they're, you know, they, they're operational at night with internal lighting, so.
And I think we should get some to go out here, because I think they're kind of fun.
You should have them, yeah, all right.
Put that in the budget this year.
I've also got a color visual to talk about the Kelvin scale, to see what the color of the lights, lighting would be in it. So I, that could be added in here.
I was wondering about that, how do you determine that? And how do you enforce that?
Well, you get the manufacturer, you know, what the light is and you can look it up online to see what, how it performs. You can, that's our specification, you give it to people before they install their lights. Just like we would ask that they show us their cut sheet for their light fixture before they buy them and install them.
But then, is there a way of telling actuaries, you know, they say, okay, here's what we're going to use and then, you know, the lights seem awful bright?
You have to, well, if it seems awful bright, then we need to change our rules. But if it's within, I mean, this is a standard that is from the Dark Sky Society. And if we don't like the standard, we can change the standard. If they've been installed and then we can ask them for the model and manufacturer and look it up online to see what their, what light is being emitted.
Now, would you say the town of Lime is doing one of these right now? But if we were to put these, this is, I'm trying to set a standard here such that we have dark skies. How's Lime doing right now? With our existing lights, so our current existing light at the school, the light to everywhere, I'm just trying to.
I think that the Lime Inn did a really good job of having sharp cutoff down past lighting. I think that the neighbors appreciate that. I think that it's ridiculous having those, the facade lighting that they have. It doesn't accentuate anything about the architectural. The Lime Inn has exterior lights that wash the face of the building. And I think that that isn't, I think it looks bad. It create, you know, cast shadows and all that, but that was, that was their choice, it is sharp cutoff. So, and I don't, I'm not a fan of facade lighting for that. You know, we have internally lit sign at the country store. It's kind of like a, that would not be, more of those would not be allowed.
More than not.
Okay.
Just trying to understand.
But they have a cachet, they're kind of folky, you know, they're not, you know, they're, people don't do that much anymore. And so it's kind of a historic remnant, which I don't think is, is a wrong thing to have for that, you know, vintage architecture store. So, but in terms of others, I think that one is enough in town for that, you know, for that.
How about the residential properties in town?
This doesn't deal with the residential properties.
I'm just, I'm just sort of.
A lot of people, okay, well, I'll tell you, I've got.
Do they do well or do they not?
No, my neighbors, I mean, I love the fact that they have the ice skating rink and they've got lights on their ice rink, but year-round, they have a, basically a street light that is motion sensitive. When I move in my bedroom, the motion sensor goes on. And, you know, it's like, and it flashes into, you know, my, my bedroom, and I'm living with the stupid street light, so I don't like that.
That's what they like, gray folks.
Yeah, well, these are my neighbors, they like their lighting. But, you know.
So I guess what I'm getting at is I just want to know.
Lots of people have bloodlights that are.
What are we going to be faced with when people say, you're asking me to do this and you're going around down?
Remember, this is commercial, multi-family residential, this is not individual homes.
Right.
Okay, so I think. Okay, so, um, I think, uh, Crossroads has got spotlights on their sign, that's upward lighting. And they could very well have, you know, a light fixture on the top of the sign that goes down, rather than lighting the night sky, so.
We had to change, I mean, we gotta complain about the town garage.
Oh, that thing, is that wall pack?
Well, the beginning.
What was the complaint?
Well, in the beginning, if, and I didn't notice, because we don't drive there at night, but it was basically like a big ballpark was on, somebody was playing baseball or something, because that whole high street was just like this.
Well, you can walk in and drive over there tonight, and the wall pack on that is ruined.
So, if we're having a storm or something like that, now, so the rule is with Steve that, you know, only this light goes on, to turn everything else off when everybody leaves the shop. He does don't leave all the lights on. But that's what they were doing, they were leaving all the lights on, and it was like, oh crap, the neighbors couldn't even sleep at night, there was so much. So, you know, that's my point, I'm like, wait a minute, you know, how, how do we, how do we answer, how do we answer the question? Well, wait a minute, you're making us answer this hoop, but look at what everything else is going on.
The town of Hanover has a sharp cutoff requirement in their site plan, but the town of Hanover has those acorn-shaped things, which are not dark sky compliant, you know, all over town. It's the, it's the kind of traditional thing, and that, that should go away.
I mean, getting back to what you were saying before, I think there's, there's a balance between the literal sharp cutoff stuff and stuff that just fits in.
Well, I mean, the, the, you know, remnant, the co-op, the little co-op on Route ten has what was left over from when it was a gas station, and they just swapped a sign out because they could. You know, so we're, actually in Hanover, we did inventory of freestanding sign, of signs that are freestanding, so all those ones with, um, that were internally lit, kind of came up out of that, and, um, so. But I don't think that, I mean, personally, I don't think we should have more internally lit signs in town, I think having the one is good. We've got some, uh, they're not totally, I think, DOWs and also Martha DeBolt, those signs aren't totally sharp cutoff. But, you know, at least they're downcast, they're not, they're not uplit.
I don't live on the common until, recently, I didn't live in Lime, but, you know, just, um, but now that I, you know, I can actually take a, take a look around and everything, but, so I'm not really up on what, what the lighting is at night. But you, you live here, you're.
It's dark.
You live here.
I mean, to me, so, our street lighting, we went through this with the streetlights, and this, and how many of those streetlights? We turned off a lot of the streetlights, because people thought there were too many.
I remember that.
I still think there are too many.
And, but, but right now, there have been multiple close calls on that common where I live, because people walk out there with their dogs and everything, and people come flying down through there, and.
So, there's a balance.
And we don't have enough light there to, to see people walking, so.
Let me tell you, my streetlight would come right over to your neighborhood if you'd like it, because.
That's not my point, but.
Well, no, I'm happy to let you have it.
I'm just trying to look at it from the town's perspective, that, you know, we have safety issues to balance and other things.
People who are walking their dogs.
Well, I think, I think the point is, we, we want a balance.
Right, exactly.
And people who drive on that side of the common should not speed, because it's a very residential street.
Hopefully, it'll be one way, it's hopefully. That's something we talked about.
But how are we doing? I mean, I think we need to, um, try to keep lights sharp cutoff. And, um, and sharp cutoff lights are very safe, they're putting, you know, the light where people, we're not limiting the amount of light on any site at all. You get as many lights as you want, as long as they're sharp cutoff, and you think that it's safe enough.
So, with this.
So, these are standards that would only apply to commercial or multifamily residential. They're not gonna go to the individual homeowner, I think it'd be great for us to, it'd be a wonderful project to be able to have people, homeowners come in and have a swap for their spotlights to somehow give them a sharp cutoff fixture. Because all over town, it could be doing, you know, doing better.
So, what's everybody think about this?
Okay, look at what we'd be asking people for, um, I mean, I think on page four, we need to talk about that.
Submission of plans?
Yeah.
So, this is, this is just for site plan review?
Just for site plan review, lighting standards for site plan regulations. Plans indicating location, um, on the premises and the type of illuminating devices, fixtures, lamps, supports, reflectors, and other devices.
We have, we could have that now.
So, well, as long as we.
So, is this, is this thought of?
Now, it's required.
We asked them to show the lights, it's not as explicit. So, I don't, I don't know what you guys finally got for the terrace at, at Latham, I don't know.
Well, we talked about it, and I, I.
Well, whatever, it doesn't, doesn't matter whatever, you know, so it's just, you know, description of the devices, um, and the cat, but the catalog cut sheet is most important, because then we get to see how the light performs. And, um, you know, what the, what the pattern of the lighting is.
You're thinking of this as replacing what we have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it augments it, and then, you know, it actually adds a lot of definitions. Photometric data will show how well-lit an area is. So, there we get a sense about, if you put a light here, is the light gonna spill over onto the neighbor's property or not? And the isolumens will tell you how much. And then, we wanna know if they're on timers, or if they're motion sensitive, um, you know, what the timing would be.
Okay, thoughts, anybody? Well, first, David, is there, sometimes when you, you have comments about what, um, you have any comments, I guess, for?
No, I, I've read through it, and I don't see any, you know, nothing jumped out at me, it's, the, given the enforcement part.
That's what I'm.
Is, you know, always a challenge, um, but again, you know, if the, the planning board did, um, will not accept a plan that does not have all the information provided, then, uh, that makes my life a whole lot easier, you know, saying.
That you don't have to identify.
Right, because, you know, if they put up something that's not, um, was not what they said they were, then I can say, see, this is your approval, this is what you said you were going to do, you didn't do it. You need to go back, and, you know, I have some, some teeth to, to require that.
I think it's okay to ask them at the time of the site plan to show us what your light is going to be.
Oh, absolutely, I have no issues with that whatsoever.
Then it's very clear, and then we don't get into the situation like we got into at Latham.
I think one thing I'd like to do, which, which I should have done, but I did, I didn't, I didn't, and because I was a little confused. I'd like to go, I'd like to have time to go back and actually look at this next to our existing lighting.
You know, this is their.
But, but I wanna get.
Since twenty seventeen.
Where, where are they at? Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what is this gonna replace? Where is our existing lighting?
I think we have a, like a paragraph or something.
Yeah, in site plan reviews?
Yes, yes.
So, where is it? I was just trying to figure that out.
I don't have a whole lot of experience with going through plans. And I look at this one, I say, okay, look what we did, and I hate to keep on, but Bailey's was one of them that we just, I was part of that, and I saw that. The plan that we required from Bailey's.
Okay, I think that's something.
Didn't have anything to do with this, we couldn't have done, we couldn't enforce that, right? I mean, that's what your point is, was that you don't have a plan there for which you can go back and.
Well, I have a basic plan, but I, I agree with you that, you know, I, I feel we need to get to the board.
Can we have a conversation here? So, listen to what David says.
I think having the board require, you know, a full set of plans, it, it may be difficult for some people to, um, do scale, drawing, you know, no one, not everyone's an engineer, not everyone's a surveyor trying to do. And a lot of people are trying to do projects on a shoestring budget. And so, I think there is some room for, um, play with the board to say, well, we're, you know, we can accept this.
You know, what, what my criteria would be, and I would expect you in any site plan review to tell us, you know, before we approve it, is, is this acceptable to you? Is this a basis? And I didn't hear any, uh, objections when we were going through.
No, and I, I actually don't have a whole big problem with Bailey's plan, there, you know, there are some things that I think needs to be updated or changed, you know, fixed.
I'm bringing this up specifically.
Yeah, I know, but you keep, you keep, that's, that seems to be one that you keep bringing up, and, and we keep having the same conversation about it.
I can try and come up with a different one, but I don't have any other example, and I'm wondering how often that kind of plan comes before the board, such that we, I mean, the lighting that's out there, in no way meets this.
No.
In no way, all around.
And, and everybody had an opportunity to talk about it.
He showed us where his light poles were gonna go, because I asked him, and where the lights were gonna be.
Yeah.
I don't know what was existing before we were able to review.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a lot of that is existing, wasn't it? A lot of his lighting. Well, but it was my understanding, if you're gonna, I mean, when, so, so what, now, if I'm hearing this correctly, someone comes in for a site plan review, and they've got lights that don't meet this criteria.
The board has, has the right to make them change it for you.
Okay, well, that's what I was.
Well, you were on the board too, all of us were there. But, I mean, you voted for it, Rusty.
That's, that's very, this is the point, not be attacking, I mean, come on.
Well, you keep on bringing up that case, and I find it, I find it inappropriate, given the select board's role in, at, in overriding the planning board even having an opportunity to address the DOWs issue.
Question with regard to how that case would have then related to this, we're here to talk about this, and how does that, how, related to using it in that circumstance?
Because when you keep bringing it up in that, in that way, I will address it that way. In terms of, of, of your, your issue about how would we do it, how would we do it for anybody? We, we would try to follow the rules, and we'd vote on it.
I think going, I think you would look at the lights that are there, and if they don't meet the criteria, um, then the board has the opportunity to say this, and these lights don't meet the criteria.
It would be nice if the neighbor had said, these lights really bother me, and they're on all night long. And so, we could have either said, okay, is there a way you could make it so that these lights aren't on all night, they go off at nine o'clock? Or, can you swap the light out so that it's a sharp cutoff fixture? I mean, those are two things that could be done, and if, if they are indeed a problem, then if he comes in so that he gets his, whatever expansion he's done that's not, hasn't been approved, then we can go through that exercise. I mean, guys, when we ask for plans or these things, they, they're all, yes, they come out of the pocket, but they're business expense. They, they, they get written off, it's, it's a whole lot easier to ask somebody who's got a very successful business to, to do something like this, because it's the cost of doing business, and it's acknowledged in the tax code and all that. So, it's, it's okay. And, you know, I, I can't help but think, I mean, you know, we talked about how can we help businesses in town? Well, having a little bit of a fund that could be loaned out, you know, to need help, giving your plans together, we loan it out, you know, so that they can do their design work, and then pay the fund back, you know, over two years, so that, you know, if it's, they don't have that money upfront, you know, help them out in that way, um, to try to support our businesses.
I think in terms of plans, um, you know, the best plans that, that we can get that are reasonable, and that David can work from.
If we don't know what the plan is showing, or if it's not showing everything, then it needs to be changed. And that was like a problem that I had with the, the DOWs plan that we saw, because it wasn't showing everything they wanted to do, and, um, and it wasn't showing anything.
We had them, we had them address that.
I know, so, um, and that, I think, underscores the need for us to go out and take a look, do a site visit with the applicant for each and every one of these, not be picking on anybody, but just to be sure that what they see every day and might not think should be on the plan gets on the plan.
Okay, good.
If we have, let's say we put these rules in our site plan review, then we have the purview of either enforcing what they have or not, right? I mean, we have, there's limit, there's leeway here.
Any new light definitely needs to meet this.
Right.
Okay, and, um, Mordi did have new lights, and we talked about them being sharp cutoff. There are gonna be pole lights, or number one down at, at the end of the driveway, before you get up to the residence, and there's probably another one up there as well.
But I mean.
But if, if we get neighbors saying, these lights are really terrible, then it's our duty to work with the applicant to get it so that it's not impacting the neighbor.
But what I mean is, we have the, we have the right to not force them to un, you know, if we, if we don't think it's a problem, we, they don't have to follow.
If, if they're existing lights, then the board really can't go back and say, you have to change these, but I think there is, Vicki's point, if they're, if they are a problem.
Right.
Then it's something that the board can bring up and ask to, that it be addressed.
Just like the, the, I mean, they had, I mean, putting the screening up for the neighbors to the north on, on that project, um, that was a good thing to do, and we wouldn't have known that that was a, a good thing to do unless the neighbors had come and talked about how that use was impacting them in a, in a long way.
Yeah, I've already seen her start excavating.
You know what, he could have excavated, say it was a single-family home, he could have done that anyway, um, just the fact is that.
Not under a problem.
It wasn't a single-family home, um, situation, but we were able to at least get screening in to help the neighbors out.
All right, um, I, I'm unsure, I wanna go back.
Okay, so what, what you're looking at is on page ten of the site plan, it's ten point five, point nine, point four.
Ten point five, point nine.
Four.
Four. And I'd like to just get a sense of how everybody else, as we go forward, I'd just like to get a sense of everybody's response, starting with you.
I, I like the idea, it, it seems like a, like a headache. You know, when I, when I read through this, it seems I wouldn't know how to go about putting this information together, and I can figure it out, but.
That'd be diff, it'd be difficult.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, that's like.
Every cut sheet has a, you know, kind of a little map showing how the light comes out of the fixture. So, you know, if it's somebody who's a hands-on person, they use that shape, and wherever they've got the light, they put it down, and they, they can, they're isolumens, which measures the amount of light, just like you have contours, but it's amount of light, and, um, they can draw it themselves.
Okay.
It's not anything, you know, it would be nice if they had a consultant be able to do it after.
I just wanna get, and how do you feel?
Yeah, I think we need more, uh, more than we have in our site plan now.
Yeah, I agree.
Site review now, so, yeah, I mean, I'd like to read through these more, but I, I don't see a problem, I think because we have leeway and we can tailor it to each specific case, I think it's fine.
Okay, as is.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, we can figure it out.
And I know you like it.
You know, this is from the Dark Knights Association.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm not sad, but, but you like.
Yeah, so I was saying, here it is, and it, it's a standard, it's pretty clear.
Right, I get it, I'm just, I'm just get it, wanna get a sense.
Gives us a basis, rather than being so.
And Rusty, what are your thoughts?
Well, I appreciate the objective, but I think it's far too cumbersome.
Okay. Is there?
So, I guess, if I was, you know, you can use your red pen and go cross out what you don't want in there.
Yeah, so that's, that's what. Yeah, so that's, that's what I.
So we need to have something, so, so.
Okay, okay.
To address situations like you're dealing with, what's the minimum we need? So cross out what you don't like and come back and, you know.
So let's, as a, as a board, that's why I want to get everybody's sense. I mean, that was my, my thinking is, is I'd like to go back and, and compare and see, you know, do I like the whole package? Do I like one from column A, one from column B? I'd suggest that we all do that and come back with, uh, anything that we like, point, you know, discuss what we don't like. Maybe there's, maybe everybody's going to want the whole thing or maybe people are going to want parts of it or, or none of it, but.
I don't really care, I just think we need more than what we've got.
Okay, so, uh, that's, uh, that's some homework for everybody. Uh, do you have anything?
I have one, um, Walt Swift, uh, was a ZDA member, resigned and we'd like to get him replaced.
We, we're going to do Sue Ryan.
Right, Sue Ryan has volunteered to, uh, take over, um, so, but, uh, some members, uh, members are voted in by the select board, some are planning board, Walt Swift is a planning board appointee, um, and so at that position, um.
So, well, she'll be filling in or starting from scratch?
Well, um, right now, uh, his term ends in March.
Yeah.
Uh, so we'll be filling in until March and then hopefully adding another three years.
So, but in terms of what we'd be doing, we'd be approving her just until March and then approving her again?
I'm not sure if that's, I think you can, it's only a three-year term, so I think you have to approve her through March and then, in March again.
She may want to quit by the end of March, so.
Well, she has been a, a ZDA member in the past, so she has, does have experience.
All right, but, but legally.
Legally, it will be.
We have to do both or?
Yeah, we will have to do both.
Okay, so this, this is for just to get her to March?
Just to get her till March and then I will bring it up again in March.
So I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, all those opposed, okay, she's on.
Good, I will get that all set up and then I'll come back to you in March and.
And do it again, go back, Jack, and do it again, um, all right, are we done? Yeah.
New business, can I throw out an item of new business?
Can we stop you?
Probably not.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll keep it short, it's for your consideration.
Okay.
Looking at table four one in the ordinance, I see that restaurants are not permitted in either the Lyme Common District or Lyme Center.
Aren't they, uh, permitted by conversion?
Yeah, they're committed, permitted by conversion. You can't build a new, build in with a restaurant, but you can convert an existing building to a restaurant. That's how, uh, Stellus was created because it was an existing building and they converted.
Okay, um, is there a reason?
I, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I've, I've heard that, uh, people at the time didn't want McDonald's or something like that, that's my best guess, I don't know.
Uh, the, the intent was to keep the Lyme Common looking like the Lyme Common, not, um, have a, a large chain come in and tear down one of the existing buildings and put up.
Got it.
Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Yeah, or, right, any of the, even any of the, uh, Applebee's or Chili's or.
Right.
So, so how do you control a conversion, I'm just trying to.
Well, you would be allowed to have any restaurant under a conversion, but you're going to keep the buildings looking the way.
You can convert the building to, to change your use.
But you can't.
Is that limited additions and, um, you know, what part of the facade do you need to keep in order to keep, you know what I'm, I mean?
That's up to the zoning industry.
Well, when you look, I don't know if you've ever looked at the construction of any of those chain restaurants, but they are, the buildings are about as cheap as they can be.
Right.
Like Dr. Mike Hinsley fighting a fire at Chili's down in West Lebanon.
So how, how, so if we can allow someone to tear down a building and build a new building that we like, how do we tell them they can't? That's, I don't understand.
Tell who they can't.
Well, it's because the use is.
You don't want the IHOP in there, so you don't want.
Well, no, no, it's not that you don't want the IHOP, you don't want the IHOP building.
They just don't want their building.
Yeah.
You want, you know, again, you look at like, um, Freeport, Maine, you look at some, like, where McDonald's or Arby's that are up there. Uh, they're in an existing building that fits in with the, the community.
They've got really small arches and they're not even big, you know, they're really small.
Discreet arches.
Well, it, it is, and, you know, you walk in and it looks exactly like any other restaurant that you have in any other, um.
So we control that by, uh, telling them what kind of building they can build under conversion?
Well, it, it, what, under the conversion, they have to use the existing building and so that they can make changes.
Consistent with the other.
So you can't tear down a building.
Right, you can't tear down a building and put in.
But you could tear down ninety percent of the building and destroy it.
You can tear down the building for the residents, whatever, you know, or another approved use.
No, I get that, what I'm saying is somebody tried to do this, I mean, I'm looking at trying to convert, let's say the building wasn't appropriate for it and they needed to add, you know, a kitchen and everything else to it, so they're going to add.
I think they could go to eight to whatever.
Yeah, they, they would be allowed to, or as long as it met all the requirements for dimensional controls.
They could, there's a.
Add on to do that, um.
They'd have to buy, buy the rest of the ordinance.
So they can't replace, is what you're saying?
Actually, they could not tear down.
Under certain circumstances, you can replace.
But no, you'd have, you would not be able to build a brand new building, you know, tear one down, build a brand new building for that specific purpose.
I see.
You would be, you'd have to use existing.
Good. My curiosity is completely satisfied, thank you. I, I need to detain you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry we gave you a good answer.
I wanted to let you know that, uh, the next, um, Thursday, the twenty-four, is this when our next meeting time is?
Yes, well, that is, but that's going to be the public forum with LCDC planning board and their lights.
Okay, well, I, I have to be over the notch harder and doing a not work, not weed workshop, so.
At what time?
At seven. So.
That's great.
My job, sorry.
All right.
I don't know a lot of people who want to get that workshop to.
We, yeah, and I can't help it, I'm not, um.
I filled up this morning, this, we have.
The not, this, I think the not weed workshop was, was scheduled before the LCDC presentation was, so.
So, so the Conservation Commission's taking on not weed.
Right, in a big way.
At least that was the report this morning, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Which is great, yeah.
Right up here. Good luck. There's a huge, there's a huge stand of it.
Oh, really?
But yeah, there may be a lot of people, if I'm allowed.
Want to go there? Is there going to be that one?
We're going to do, uh, one on glossy buckthorn next, I don't think we're going to do another one on not weed though, but we've got, um.
Is it recorded?
Yeah, we send Rich, yeah.
Rich should be here.
Yeah, so sorry, I.
That's too bad.
It's out of my control, this.
All right, anything else, anybody got anything else? Does anybody want to go home? All right.